Good evening, and welcome to the Bennington Select Board's bi-monthly meeting. It's Monday, July 25th, 2016. We're convening at the luxurious Bennington Fire Facility at 130 River Street. We have an interesting and enjoyable agenda tonight. I would introduce myself as Tom Jacobs, and I have the pleasure of being the Chair of the Select Board at this point, but I'd like my colleagues to introduce themselves.
Good evening, I'm Donald Campbell.
Hello, I'm Jeanne Jenkins.
Good evening, I'm Michael Keane, and as I usually say, I'm still me. Hi.
Never follow kids or dogs. My name is Jim Carroll.
And I'm Jean Conner.
I'm Stuart Hurd, the Town Manager, and next to me is Lynda Bermudez, our records clerk.
And our esteemed-
Esteemed-
Esteemed. And you can see why I enjoy serving on this board with these folks there. Great to work with and share the time with. Justin Corkman called in and that he's not able to attend the meeting tonight. As we always do, we open the meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance. Jim, would you lead us?
Yes, sir.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jim. As is our practice, we like to deal with the consent items, and they've been set forth on the agenda. We have the minutes of the July 11th meeting, and also the minutes of the July 20th minute meeting, which as my colleagues will recall is our training session for the board. I'm going to just deviate a little bit, could I just get a motion for the acceptance of the minutes of the 11th and 20th?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on those? If not, all in favor, signify by aye, and that's a six to zero. Normally, we would also include the warrants. During that meeting we had with the folks from the League of Cities and Towns, we talked about warrants a bit, and I'm just wondering, rather than share that long book, comes down our way every other Monday, if we couldn't pass the warrants and authorize the Chair or the Vice Chair to sign the warrant for the board, then you don't have to worry about missing the one section or otherwise. But in order to do that, I would ask that we have a motion for that purpose, and then discussion.
I move that we allow the Chair or Vice Chair to sign all warrants.
As approved by the-
As approved by the Board.
Yep.
Second.
Any other discussion? It just seems to make some degree of sense.
Is there any-
Limitation.
Limitation or liability to that?
Only on the Vice Chair.
Okay.
I don't believe in Vice.
There is not. As we learned in that training session, that the Chair and/or the Vice Chair can be authorized to sign the warrants on behalf of the Board as long as the Board has seen them and approved them.
I have some questions-
Sure.
About that. Would this preclude any Board member from asking questions?
Not at all.
Because before that authority can come, the entire Board has to approve the warrants. It just means who signs for the- Any questions, like tonight, you should ask if there are questions relative to the warrants. So all it is, is giving administrative authority to sign the warrants.
Instead of all of us.
Exactly.
I don't know. I'm not completely comfortable with that because the people of the town have entrusted and put their faith in each and every one of us, not just two of us, to ask relevant questions. And I understand what you just said.
Sure.
I don't know. I don't think I need to be convinced.
I can only say that it's an administrative function. You, as an individual representative, still have the ultimate authority to say yea or nay to the warrant. And if you say nay, that's going to show up on the vote, and it's going to be a six to one or five to two or something of that nature. So your vote would be registered. It's just that whoever has the authority to sign will actually sign that document.
I'm not comfortable. I'm just being honest with you, Tom.
Okay, that's fine. You might want to speak into the mic, I'm not sure.
I'm just not comfortable with that decision.
Other members have restlessness about it?
I don't have restlessness about it. Jim, you know, I understand your point of view, but I think that it's incumbent on all of us to read and understand and ask questions before the vote is taken. One thing that might help a little bit, if, tell me if this would help you, we have been approving of the warrants with the minutes and kind of a consent agenda because it's more efficient and it gives us more time to move on to other things. If you would feel better having a separate vote just on the warrants before the Chair signs it, we could ask the Chair to separate those two functions again. So instead of having a consent agenda in which several things are lumped together, we could vote on the minutes, and then we could vote on the warrants if that made you feel any better about it.
You'd just like to sign, that's why.
No. No, I don't think that that is necessary, Donald, to have a separate vote on them. My concern is that, and because I look over the warrants on a weekly basis, and you know, I think I've made it clear that I've had questions over time, but I've either called Stu or Dan, less or more infrequently than in the past. Nevertheless, I don't have a quarrel with keeping them together. It's just having two Board members out of seven sign off.
I think we're all signing off.
And I understand what the goal is, that it will, in point of fact, simplify things, and it won't disallow any one of us Board members from asking questions.
Yep. And it's no really different than like, we're going to have a proclamation tonight. The Board moves on it, and we sign it, or sometimes there's a note that we have to cast, and the Board authorizes the Chair to do it. It's in that same vein, it's sort of administrative direction charged by the Board for the Chair and/or the Vice Chair to sign it.
Hey, Tom, if there was a warrant that one of us was not willing to approve, one wine that was not, we were not willing to approve, would we not sign the book? So you would have the option, Jim would have the option-
To object to it.
To not sign the book now, and you would have the option to-
Right.
Vote no against the warrants.
So in our blue book that we would get, would it have a place where we object?
No, you just wouldn't.
Just wouldn't sign.
You would vote no. You would vote no.
Rather than have five places for each of us to sign, there would be potentially one, or maybe, I'm not sure how it would be set up, one place for each-
We'd probably look for a signature on all of the-
Distributions.
Accounts, warrants, and on the payroll warrant. So there'd be at least two signatures at a given meeting.
Again, it's an attempt to streamline the process, but not to interfere with the Board members. Could I call for a vote? Unless someone else has a comment. All call for a vote, all in favor of the motion as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those that are opposed to it signify by nay. The count is five to one. Thanks. Thank you. We also have a reason to vote on the warrant, because we've just had the discussion. We already have gotten that book tonight. So all those in favor of the warrant as submitted, signify by aye.
Aye.
That looks like a six to nothing. We also have a proclamation, and I would ask the Vice Chair to present it to the Board for its consideration.
The Town of Bennington Proclamation about the Ride for Gabe. Whereas Duchenne muscular dystrophy, or DMD, according to Parent Project Muscular Dystrophy, is the most common fatal genetic disorder diagnosed in childhood, affecting approximately one in every 3,500 live male births. And whereas there is tremendous need to raise awareness for this genetic condition that causes progressive muscle weakness, leads to serious medical problems, and premature death because it is 100 percent fatal with no cure currently. And whereas Michael Staley, Wes Bates, and Payne Griffin are riding their bicycles from Holton, Maine to Mobile, Alabama, a trek called the Ride for Gabe, to bring the needed awareness to DMD by telling the story of Gabe Griffin, an 11-year-old Alabamian who suffers from this debilitating condition. And whereas we are honored, as the Town of Bennington, to welcome and recognize these cyclists and the Hope for Gabe Foundation, who are engaged in such a worthy cause. And whereas it is boys like Gabe Griffin from Alabama who show us what real courage and strength are, inspiring all of us as they show the world they're not afraid of challenges along the way, as they fight valiantly to overcome obstacles and roadblocks that are presented to them by Duchenne. And whereas raising awareness about DMD, that is Duchenne muscular dystrophy, will lead to more support and hopefully a cure in our lifetime, now therefore, we, the Bennington Select Board, do hereby proclaim Sunday, July 31st, 2016, as Ride for Gabe Day to end Duchenne in the Town of Bennington. And we invite all citizens to join with us as we bring awareness to Duchenne muscular dystrophy, and as we support these cyclists in their journey across the country to help and honor Gabe Griffin and other patients suffering from Duchenne, dated at Bennington, Vermont, this 25th day of July, 2016, by the Select Board, Town of Bennington, Vermont.
You've heard the Vice Chair read the proclamation. Do I have a motion to accept the proclamation as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion relative to the proclamation?
It's a long bike ride.
It is a long bike ride for a, you know, if you think of one in every 35 male lives being affected, that by itself is a statement of how difficult this particular disability is. Hearing the proclamation, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
That is six in favor, and we will all sign the proclamation, and the Town Manager will see that it's presented to the riders as they come through on Sunday. We now have a citizens' comment period. This is an opportunity for citizens just to be recognized, to come up to the lectern, introduce themselves, and state the reason they would like to share their thoughts with us. Go ahead, Michael.
I am a resident of Dorset, and I work here in the town of Bennington.
Could you maybe move that mic or a couple of mics? I'm not sure what, how-
Put them up towards you.
Yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
Better, all right. So the reason I'm here, I'm on something of a quest to encourage the State Agency of Transportation to consider raising the speed limit on US Route 7, the limited access portion of the highway between roughly Exit 2 and the railroad crossing in east Dorset. As a daily commuter on that road, I've found that the, in my commuting in the last couple of years, I've found that the speed limits, under good conditions, is a little bit oppressive, and I believe that my fellow commuters agree with me because the typical speed on the road is about 65 miles an hour. Engineers generally set the speed limits on roads at what's known as the 85th percentile speed, and I believe that that's roughly where the speed is on that road. So I have a feeling that the lower speed limit of 55 causes some negative impact, such as, well, inconvenience, but also perhaps contributing to road rage. Also, there might be a safety concern, whereas while most people do go about 65, you do get the occasional driver who complies with the law and goes 55, and what you have is more passing than might ordinarily be the case if the traffic were flowing at a uniform rate. So anyway, what I, you know, as this need kind of built up, I reached out to a community group. You're probably familiar with the Manchester Marketplace Facebook group, which has about 8,000 members. So I posted a poll back in April on that group, gauging the public's feeling about this issue, and I got roughly an 85 percent positive response rate. Out of about 210 respondents, 31 thought it would not be a good idea to adjust the speed limit. So based on those findings, what I did was I started a petition. Being that it's a state jurisdiction, a state road, I started a petition, which I submitted with the, to Chris Cole, the Secretary of Transportation of the State. And I have a copy of the petition here with me, with 243 signatures on it as of right now. And I got correspondence back from the State basically saying that while it is a state road, they don't really have a mechanism for responding to such input, and they are looking for more local buy-in. The municipalities that are affected by the traffic rules on that road, they want to, I guess they don't want to step on the feet of the municipal governments. So they've kind of kicked this back to me and asked me to approach the local governments and ask for some local buy-in in the form of a written request, basically, from each, well, from as many of the municipalities in the North and South Shire who are interested in pursuing this. So that's why I'm here. I've been before the Manchester, Dorset, Sunderland, and Shaftesbury Select Boards in the last couple of weeks, and I plan to go to Arlington after here and be done with this. But I feel like it's something that, you know, does have good public support. I think it would benefit us quality-of-life-wise. It might also encourage more tourists to pass through the area rather than if they're heading to Killington or some other resort area with a slightly higher speed limit. This route might be more attractive than perhaps going through Fordan and Whitehall. So I think there's a lot of good reasons to have a look at this. What I'm asking from the State specifically is that they initiate a study to determine whether this can safely be done, whether, you know, I'm not an engineer, I don't know. There may be reasons why it's just not doable, but I'd like the State to take a look at it. So with your permission, I'd like to give you a copy of the petition along with, there's several dozen comments from people who signed the petition that you can peruse, and also my correspondence with the State that's basically outlining what it is that they're looking for from the local governments.
Would you like to make that part of the record tonight?
Sure.
Okay.
Before we go about that.
Yep. I'm just asking the question just now. Would you like to make that part of your record tonight? Of the minutes?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. If I have no objection, we'll make that a part of the record. You can just give that to the Town Manager, and then we'll entertain questions from the Select Board.
Really?
Anybody?
During-
Okay. Yeah, it's citizens' comment, but you know, just if we have something to worry.
May I?
Yeah.
I want to do-
This is brief.
Mr. Keane?
Yes, Mr. Keane.
Could you, do you know what the traffic, the numbers are in terms of traffic up and down, let's say Route 7 from Dorset to Bennington each day?
I don't have that-
What the peaks would be, what the lows would be, for example?
I don't have that information. I'm hoping the State might- You know, I don't want to get into an agenda, and I understand that. So if, this is the first time we've heard about this, because I haven't heard any burning issues presented by the local folks. And again, I think the State has ultimate jurisdiction over this-
Sure.
And I'm kind of concerned that they, all of a sudden, it's passing it to the, quote, "municipalities" to deal with, because I think the buck really belongs with them, because I think we have limited interest in this on a community basis. But that's personal observation, and while I certainly would defer to Stu.
I think generally, in state highways located within municipal boundaries, if the Select Board sees a need to either raise or lower a speed limit, we would simply request a speed warrant analysis for that section of the roadway which is within the town of Bennington, and forward that to the Agency of Transportation.
I didn't get that, was the impression I got was further up, was it, where was it? Was it Exit 2?
So the communities that were this section, I believe Bennington, there's a few miles, Shaftesbury, Glastonbury, which doesn't really have a town government-
Right.
Arlington, Sunderland, and Dorset are the affected communities.
I have some observations.
Yeah.
It would, I think the request is to simply increase the speed limit from 55 to 65 as you pass Exit 2 heading north and coming-
And that's an arc.
And south, you would reduce it back to 55.
That's correct. And that's an arc.
Yes, that, it was in the town of Bennington.
Okay. Okay.
Did I hear you say it's just requesting a study to be done?
Yes, basically, I'm asking the State to do a study to find out if it's safely feasible to raise the speed limit. And of course, if the study determines that yes it is, then hopefully the State would take the initiative then to take the next step and do that.
Well, I'm not an expert in this either. I'm from New Jersey, so I-
I am as well.
-tend to have a little bit of a heavy foot. I'm wondering, we'll have to see how the study goes. I'm wondering if it's because there's no median and it's a two-lane road that-
It could be.
I don't know.
Again, I don't think we should get into a discussion.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's an engineering question-
Exactly.
That the State warrant analysis will determine.
I think we'd have to put this on the agenda-
Yeah.
-if you're going to have a question for a discussion whether or not we even want to ask or recommend or have any discussion on that, and having your comments.
I just want to offer a little bit of historical perspective and personal perspective on Route 7, which I drive just about every single day. But 55 miles an hour historically was suggested and signed into law by Richard Nixon, because they found that that was the most fuel-efficient use of cars at that time to, you know, make people car mileage better. Nevertheless, having, traveling Route 7 north and south every single day, I go five miles over the speed limit. And as a friend of mine, I better not say that, I'm having a second thought, but instead of a rather rude salute, it's just partial, it's a partial salute over the speed limit. And my point is, if you rate, and traveling every day, people fly by me, and I know they're not going 55, they're going 65, even 70. So if we raise it to 65, you don't think that people are going to be pushing it to 75 or even 80?
There certainly may be a tendency in that direction, but certainly-
Because the police officers and state troopers that I speak with, and I've spoken with a lot of them, I'll say, you know, what's the barometer? What's the threshold-
That's not, yeah.
Within which you'll stop them? And they'll say it's about 10 miles over.
I agree with you, and that's basically what happens in practice. At the same time, enforcement is a separate issue, and I kind of wonder why we treat speed limits this way. You know, the drinking age is 21, you know, one day before it doesn't, you know, no good. So I'm not quite sure why there's this kind of unwritten-
I understand.
... understanding.
My point, my point, and then I'll finish up on this with you, Tom, is that we raise it to 65, and people are going to be going 75.
Okay.
Again, you know-
Thanks for your-
The police are certainly within their rights to enforce the speed limit.
Might be a revenue generator.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Mary, then Sam, then we have some folks.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mary Garrish. I live on Pleasant Street in Bennington, which is why I came to talk with you tonight. I want to preface my remarks by saying that I personally, and I think many other people appreciate the efforts of the town in holding the Pleasant Street Block Party that's upcoming this Saturday. I'd like to give a little historical perspective, however, on how that idea came about. Part of it was through the survey.
I'm just thinking, maybe this is really an agenda, because that's coming up, and then let Michael do it, and then you can give a historical perspective. Okay, I'd rather-
Oh, okay, so-
It's actually on the agenda.
Okay, so should I, I have a couple other comments, should I save those also? I don't-
Yeah, yeah, let's do it.
No, she's got comments that aren't related to the block party.
No, they are related to the block party.
Yeah, please, okay.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much, Mary. We'll look forward to it in a few minutes. Sam?
I'm Sam Mastino from Bennington. How are you doing? Ironically, I have a question or a statement about speed limits. This past month, this past Friday, Bennington dodged a bullet on the south side of town at 4:30 in the afternoon. I believe that was July 8th. A head-on collision by Park Lawn Cemetery. That speed limit is 30 miles per hour. Does the Town of Bennington still have that possession of a visual speed limit sign? If they do, I'm making a request that they have that visual speed limit sign at Park Lawn Cemetery and leave it there. The gentleman that was driving that vehicle was out of state. I don't know if it was weather-related or not, but technically, that sign that flashes in an amber color, he would have saw that speed limit sign and possibly slowed down. There have been other gentlemen, I don't know what his name is, surprised he's not here, that speak about the speed limit sign or speed limit issue. Stu should know, I'm preaching to the choir, about the speed limit sign being reduced. I think we need to not hear another bullet and look at that speed limit sign. My second thing is Battle Day weekend. That's our heritage. Bennington Battle Day. I'm fearful that we're going to be losing the image of Battle Day. There's not much involvement with our fire department anymore, from what I see and hear, activities, people coming into town. You look at bringing people to, the reason why to come to this town. Can we have one year to bring the Drum and Bugle competition back to this town? Is it that difficult to bring four bands to sit there? We've all been there before on Spinelli Field on a Saturday night, the day before the Battle Day, charge admission, and generate some revenue so that we can have funding for the Battle Day weekend? Because I'm fearful that if we don't do anything, fire department, young firemen, why do I want to bring my family here at Bennington? There's nothing to do for the weekend. I think we need to reinvent Battle Day weekend, and our fire department needs help from the Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sam.
Battle Day weekend is the fire department's weekend. All of the activities, all of the participants in the parade, all of the bands that come to town are hired essentially by the Bennington Fire Department and the volunteers within the department that perform the activities, so. And once again, this year will be the annual state convention. I think you'll see a ton of firefighters and their families in this community on Battle Day weekend.
I, you know, according to what Jim says, historically, I remember the Drum and Bugle Corps, they were fun to watch.
And it became-
That was in the old days when they probably came-
It became very, very expensive. Even to have the few that march in the parade is a tremendous expense.
Well, historically, there was a competition. I remember as a young boy, young adolescent, they were spine-tingling shows, but as you said, they were very expensive, and they haven't gotten any cheaper.
No.
And I've spoken with the different fire officials, and Sam, it's a great idea. You want to jump in and help get it ord-
Be more than that.
Huh? Okay. Because really, that's where this thing falls apart, is enough people to help organize it and organize the competition and the monies that would go, the prizes that were awarded, historically, is that true? Stu?
Let the record show. I'm here on camera and in person. I'll be more than happy to roll up my sleeves and help out.
All right.
I'm not going anywhere. I'm 53 years old, I'm here till I die. I'm ready to work.
Well, Stu, who was in charge of organizing the-
Yeah, why don't we do that off?
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Would you like to come up? Thanks.
Thank you.
So you're the hander, and she's the speaker, or you both? You're going to both speak?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
For our purposes, could you just identify yourself? And I know you're not residents permanently of Bennington, but you're, we have the privilege of having you in our town for about a year. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm Nevin Lassard. I'm an Americor Vista in Bennington for about 11 more days. I've been here since this past August in 2015.
I'm Rory Price. And I'm the Americor Vista at Southwestern Vermont Healthcare. I also started in August and have about a couple weeks left. So we're here to talk about Youth Appreciation Day.
Can you tell us what Americor Vista is as an org- Can you tell us what Americor Vista is as an organization?
Yes. So Americor Vista, it's a national service organization all over the country, and people like us and every other age and background come to a community, work there for a year with some type of organization, and basically work on various projects that are focused on alleviating poverty in a specific region. And so we have three Americor Vistas working this year here in Bennington. Next year, I believe there will be five here. So there's a strong, strong presence in the community here. So, yeah, we're here to talk about Youth Appreciation Day, which if you're unaware, that paper in front of you is a quick overview of when it started and what it is now. So you can see, it originally started back in 2013, based on the Youth Risk Behavior Survey data that comes out of the high schools every two years. And the data that prompted this event to be created was that only thirty-eight percent of high school students here at Mount Anthony felt like they mattered to the community, which is shockingly low. And it has gone up slightly since 2013 when that data came out. In 2015, it was forty percent, but that was the fourth worst in the state of all school districts, school supervisory unions. So we're still kind of at the bottom of the barrel right now. And so it was developed from the Career Development Center. One of the classes there worked with Kaia Morris to develop this resolution, which was passed by the town locally, as well as at the state level for Youth Appreciation Day. And so in the coming years, the first actual event was in 2014, a celebration at Willow Park, and it has evolved. And our most recent one, we had this just this past year in May. And so this is the third year of an actual event at Willow Park. And, yeah, so it's a community event. If you aren't aware, focus is on youth, Youth Appreciation Day. Basically, to celebrate the youth in the community, show them that they're cared about and that they matter to Bennington. And it's free for the day. Kids can come with their families, free food, free activities, free games, free music, raffles all day, and basically just a way to celebrate them.
What's the date of your event? I don't see it on here.
It changes year to year. This past year, it was May seventh, which was a Saturday. And as you can see on there, in this most recent year, Governor Sommell passed the proclamation or whatever, the proclamation for Youth Appreciation Month statewide, which is now May. So going forward, chances are, the event will still be held on some weekend day in May.
Great. So just to touch on the benefits of Youth Appreciation Day really quickly, we had a big part in planning it, the three of us. Michelle Morocco is a Vista at the Regional Commission, so she was also helping. And we were the sole ones to sort of pull it all together. So we think that it benefits kids and families because they get a day to sort of just enjoy themselves regardless of their socioeconomic status. They can just go play in a park. We know that stress levels in children and adults are very high, so if we can take that down just a little notch, one day a year, we're really happy to do that. Families get to explore and enjoy Willow Park, which they might not totally be aware of the rest of the year, all the wonderful things that that has to offer. And it's also a really very visible event that helps to show that the town cares about the area's children. So we have big bounce houses, things like that, that are very just highly visible and apparent that the town is really supportive of the youth. And that helps to foster trust between leadership and the residents. Benefits for the businesses, the businesses could participate in performances. We had little Zumba demos, things like that. Businesses can staff tables, and they also donated a lot of raffle items. The town let us use the parking grounds at Willow Park, picked up trash, and offered day of support, which we're really very thankful of. We wanted that, to make sure that went on the record. And outside of what it's been so far, which has been about two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred people in attendance, we really think that it's a great opportunity to sort of be a culmination event for all the great area youth programming that takes place. And we hope that eventually it could have a broader reach and pull in folks from the surrounding area, as well as older age groups. So we're here talking to you today because we had a few struggles getting it all pulled together because it was just the three of us organizing it. Our two biggest obstacles were funding and organization. So we spent a lot of time begging and borrowing. Everything was donation and grant-based. So it was difficult for us to provide what we really wanted to for the children. And then organization, we just spent a lot of time sort of pinning people down, repeating efforts that have been done in previous years. So routinizing some of the basic aspects, like booking the park, moving tables from the chamber, that kind of thing, would be really highly beneficial. So what we're looking for is more community partners, which could assist with one or both of those issues, the funding and the organization. So potential partners could include ACT, the United Way, UCS, SVMC, the SVSU, and then also maybe the town. Maybe Project Catalyst, the Rec Center could have a larger presence. So we're here talking to you today as vistas, and like Nevyn said, there will be five next year. So this isn't something that we're trying to push off on you for next May, but we're really just trying to sort of plant the seed that vistas won't always be in Bennington. We are here for a year, and it sort of goes in cycles. So it's not a guaranteed thing to have a vista presence every year, and we're just really afraid that once vistas aren't in Bennington, there won't be a Youth Appreciation Day, and that would be a real shame. So we're hoping the event can continue to grow and that you can help us do that. Thank you.
I didn't go this year, but last year I went to the event. It was, it looks like it was a good day. Kids were having a great time. The barbecue was fun. Everybody had more than enough to eat. And I did get the feeling that the people were coming and going during the course of the day, so we weren't locked in. How many folks did you say, families who are participating this year?
About three hundred individuals, we think.
And I noticed the presence of the hospital being a significant sponsor and underwriter, the town as well. And I expect that probably you've got the seed already planted, I'm hoping, but it's certainly appropriate for the record to indicate so that we don't lose this, what appears to be something that the community, especially the youth, look forward to. At least, that's my impression. Other comments, reactions? Go ahead.
Was there any partnership with the Rec Center? Did you do anything with them, or did they, any way of work with you?
We booked Willow Park through them. I did ask for sports equipment, and they offered one basketball and one soccer ball, and said they didn't have anything else available. So maybe that could be something that could change in the future. Anything would be helpful, honestly.
Good point. If you'd like to broaden it, make it more active, right?
Correct.
Go ahead, Jay.
This is one of my pet peeves with all the organizations. I read your list of donating organizations and businesses, and I don't find the town of Bennington on there. And it happens quite a bit when we loan out our facilities. We don't charge for that, and we provide cleanup and we provide all of those services. We should at least be listed.
Sorry.
And that's not necessarily only you guys. It happens with a lot of organizations. We always, they accept that the town does this, but we never get the recognition. And that's pet peeve number one for me.
All right. And I mean, well, we definitely appreciated having that space being offered up to us upon request. It's a drop in the bucket, we kind of feel, towards what the whole day is. I mean, it's an awesome space, but we'd love to have the town really be involved going forward, since essentially if we go away, the event drops dead. And so just having a town presence at the table from the get-go, I think is a huge help. And it kind of would open doors that we don't necessarily have available to us right now.
I have something to say.
Jeanie, please.
I'm really happy that you're here. I really think this is important, that you're bringing it to us. This is a community responsibility. And I think it's wonderful that we have energetic individuals who are willing to put a lot of energy into it. But as you said, you change every year, so it's the learning curve starts at zero every year for the next Americor Vista's coming in. So I, you know, I do, I hope that there is an opportunity to start planning early. I know that has impacted the ability to do what we wanted to do with this. And, you know, I think there's a clear, there's clear need for more recognition of just how much this community depends on each other and how much we value youth. And there's obviously a clear connection to economic development, but there's also just a sense of, you know, who we are as we grow up. So I do hope that you will keep this on the radar. And is there someone, we shall be able to get, kick this off in the fall before she leaves, and get the new Americors on board and then get us all moving on this?
Right. So Michelle doesn't end her term next month. She'll end in November, so there will definitely be a little bit of overlap. I'm also staying in the area for one more year, so I'll be able to assist with planning.
All right. Well, I thank you very much.
Yeah, I really, like Jeanie, I want to thank you. I think you should also make yourself, make yourselves a pain in the butt to us and remind us very frequently that this is a town event. I'd like to ask you just briefly to tell me what you would advise, doing what you've done and knowing what you know. What would you advise your successors from Americor?
In terms of this event specific?
Yeah, what three things would you tell them?
Specifically to this would be to get people at the table early. Having worked briefly with the Project Catalyst on this block party that's coming up, they had everyone they needed to from day one, and things got rolling right away, and people were divvied up with tasks. So we just didn't have that. We're here, we don't know who anyone is. We're trying to figure out how we even book the park. Just, so I mean, if the town is at the table from day one, then they can just say, yes, you can use Willow Park, so we don't have to be spending a month just trying to book something so simple. That's the biggest thing that I can see.
I agree, yeah. Getting started planning earlier, maybe involving more local businesses would be good. I think it would serve as a benefit to them as well as to, as well as to the event. And we really, we had really hoped that the event would be bigger this year with more people in attendance. And it was sort of a function of, we were spending so much time doing things like raising money to make sure that we would have food to provide and things like that, that we didn't have the time to dedicate to marketing and really making it, you know, delivering on what we were trying to promise. So any assistance with the planning would definitely be helpful.
In your earlier remarks, you know, it sounded like to me that it was sort of a lament from you that not as many businesses have stepped up to participate. Does that sound accurate?
I mean, they've been willing to, as you can see on the list, there were twenty that donated-
Which were more.
... and fifteen that were there at the day. But in terms of actually planning the event, that's where, I mean, everyone is happy to say, here's a little thing to raffle off, or yeah, I'll show up on the day and set up a table. But who wants to be there from day one to plan it? And that's the, that's the real hurdle that we have to get over, is people that are willing to come to a meeting on day one and stick through it for a couple months to make sure that the day goes off without a hitch.
That's a common complaint, you know, people's lives are pretty circumscribed. Nevertheless, I know it's difficult, you know, to go hat in hand and ask for help. And it's best to go with somebody to hold your hand through it. And I certainly would be happy to jump in. You can contact me through the town office for good or ill, whether or not it helps or doesn't. But nevertheless, I applaud your efforts and your youth and jumping in so early. It's going to be gratifying to see where you are in twenty years when you're old and gray like me.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have just a real boilerplate question. What's the definition of youth? Is it all the way down to kindergarten? Is it, is it a broad definition?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of this day, we're not going to exclude anyone, really.
Okay.
It's totally open to the public.
Okay.
In the past, the majority of student or youth that arrive at the event are probably elementary school-aged. But we'd love to get a greater high school and middle school presence. And whether that's actually at Willow Park during the day, or whether it's some other type of thing that maybe is more attractive to a high school student than spending the day at the park, that's something that we're looking to explore in the future. So it's kind of all-inclusive.
I also, I have, my mind's just spinning with ideas, which I'm not going to take up today, but I also am very willing to at least sit down and talk to you about the ideas that I have. I plan a lot of events professionally, so my mind's just going crazy.
This is a pretty effective presentation, right?
With ideas. And I want to strongly encourage you to collaborate with other organizations. It is a prescription for success because you automatically have buy-in. So if you can find a couple organizations to collaborate with, would be great. And leave copious notes for your successors because you're not physically going to be here.
Yeah, we have a lot.
Deep thoughts, ideas, you know, just give them as much information, things you did wrong, things you did right, so they have a running start.
Yep. And you need a champion or a co-champion, and that's, I think, what you're saying. Okay, I think, unless you have something else, we really appreciate your coming in and sharing your experiences and good luck in your life travels.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary?
Good evening. I'm Mary Morrissey. I'll only take a couple of minutes of your time, seeing that we're about a half hour into your fifteen-minute public comments. I'm here to ask the board to reconvene the Renewable Energy Working Group. The BCRC this past Thursday, under the chairmanship of Dan Monks, approved the changes that were made to the town plan in regards to the citing of renewable energy here in Bennington, especially with the solar. Under the recent information that has come forth, that Sun Edison has filed bankruptcy, some of the very solar companies within our state have been under their umbrella or connected in some way or shape. My concern going forward is, and you've heard me at this very mic a number of times, asking about decommissioning. We had spoken earlier on about decommissioning, the clear-cutting issues, but at the time only did the portion that we did to change the town plan going forward. We were promised by Chairman Jacobs that this group would get back together to possibly reinstitute or to institute several more pieces to our changes. I think that is appropriate at this time, as I said, being that Sun Edison has filed bankruptcy. We're not totally sure of what those connections or possible problems may be. The decommissioning would be very important because if you have a company that's filed bankruptcy, and there really isn't a plan, and as you've heard, most of the plans that have come before this select board, virtually none has had a real decommissioning plan to go along with their proposal. That should concern this board, being that I don't think at the end of twenty or twenty-five years, you're going to want to have solar graveyards across the state with no means of putting them to rest, or however that would be. Also, so at this point, I am looking to ask that that will happen. And, you know, with the working group, I know Jim Carroll would have been here tonight. He was part of that. Don Campbell was, Jim Carroll was, Dan Monks, and John McFadden was, but I'm sure there could be a replacement made there.
I think I'm going to volunteer the vice chair. It's a good position to have as part of that dynamic process because it is a dynamic discussion. What we talk about in the town plan is just that, it's a plan. Now, things are coming at us faster and faster, but at the same time, you see what can happen to a mega developer can go into bankruptcy, and who gets left holding that bag?
Well, and that's my, that's my concern. That's why I'm here.
Why don't we reconvene that committee at a time that works for Dan and the committee, and then report out within a time that we can talk about. But I think it does make sense to, you know, this is something we should be looking at frequently, not just every five years.
I appreciate your time.
I just want to say that what Mary Morrissey has been talking about is the bankruptcy of Sun Edison, which is an international developer of solar arrays. You might want to take that, without sounding an alarmist tone, as a little bit of a canary in a coal mine, because I believe, according to- Uh, because I believe, according to the stories in Vermont Digger, it's leaving the, uh, the New Fane School system with a, sort of a $300,000 hole and an expectation of a solar array that was to be used at a school. So I think we just need to proceed carefully with all of these negotiations that happen, and need to remember that this business that is called the solar business is probably moving way faster than the speed at which we are accustomed to work, also moving faster downhill as well as uphill. Sorry.
No, thank you.
I appreciate.
We will do it. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
And thank you for appointing me. I'm happy to serve.
I didn't even ask.
Please, you're a president.
I'm ready. Please, you're a president. Okay, now we go into the agenda items. Um, we'll be talking about, uh, the, the upcoming block party, uh, which is exciting. It's a really a part of, something that's been in the works, sort of a culmination of where you're at right now, right, Mike? Uh, but it's sort of like the frosting on that cake that you created.
So let me give you a, a little bit of background. I did, uh, connect with Mary, uh, just before, uh, we started the meeting tonight, and she did voice some concerns, so I want to give her an opportunity to share those concerns, but, um, we're also going to see if we can, can work with her to, to make sure we, uh, resolve some of those. So, to give you some background, uh, the work that Project Catalyst has been doing started on Pleasant Street about a year and a half ago. Uh, during that time, we did residence survey, uh, and in the residence survey, the residents identified a block party as one of the things that they would like to see to help build community on the street. Uh, from that point, we've, uh, went through the winter and moved into the spring, uh, where we were then, had an opportunity to begin to plan, uh, such an event. Uh, at the table, we've had, um, not just the town, the Vermont Department of Health, the Bennington Chamber, the Coalition for the Homeless, UCS. Uh, we, there have been times where we've had some residents of Pleasant Street, uh, sit at the table as well. Uh, we have gotten some feedback from people, uh, on the street. Um, so I think we've tried to take everything into consideration, certainly if, if there are concerns, we'll try to answer those. Um, but we're looking at an event, uh, this Saturday, uh, July 30th, from noon to two, uh, looking to provide your typical hamburgers, hot dogs, veggie burgers, some healthy, uh, food options along with that. Um, and, uh, and then we reached out to different organizations around town. Um, I, through Stu, uh, and others, have, uh, sent out a letter that went out to many of the major organizations in town, asking them, you know, would they like to be a partner in this event or activity, um, to be able to provide some activities for youth along Pleasant Street. So we do have things like, uh, face painting, uh, jump rope, popscotch. Um, uh, there's going to be, uh, a llama and a mini pony. Uh, there'll be, uh, I just found out today, um, that there's the potential that, um, uh, Hemmings will have their popcorn cart there. Uh, we have, uh, Gamers Grotto is going to do, uh, a little Wii, uh, game where they project, uh, on a large screen and let, uh, kids play, uh, the Wii, uh, uh, video game that they have. So, again, there's a lot of different activities going on. What we're looking to do, and, and, uh, I recognize this isn't necessarily ideal for residents on the street, but we're looking to, uh, block off, uh, School Street to Park Street. And the reason we identified that was, one, the municipal parking lot was right there, there's a significant amount of green space, but two, it meant we could shut down a street and really have no impact on through traffic, uh, especially, uh, in a residential neighborhood where people need to come and go for a number of different reasons. Again, it, it's not, it's, it's a little bit removed from where most of the residents are, and I know that's one of, uh, Mary's concerns that she's going to share, but some of it was, uh, simply logistical, uh, in nature. The, we've had donations, the town is, uh, supporting, obviously, uh, through some funding, but we've had also commitments from, uh, the health center, as well as a local landlord, um, that's contributed funds as well to help, uh, purchase food. And we're looking at police, fire, and EMS, all wanted to be a part of it, so they're, uh, looking to cook the food and serve the food. And we're hoping that, you know, there'll be some trucks and cars out that, um, you know, we can just have on display and stuff that'll be family-friendly. So that gives you a little bit of background, again, there's the event poster, um, but the food is free, there'll be, uh, music games. Um, and again, it's about two hours, uh, for just the event. I should say, one of the things, um, that we did look at doing was, uh, we've been trying to do different neighborhood cleanups around that area. When ACT had their retreat, uh, they looked to do a neighborhood cleanup around the Benell School, the block around Benell, but we got, uh, torrential downpour, uh, at the same time, so we put that on hold. Um, so we were hoping that we could maybe incorporate it into this activity. So for those that want to participate, there is going to be, at 1:30, a quick little neighborhood cleanup where everybody can get a small trash bag, fill it up, if they bring it back, they get a free ice cream cone. Uh, Wilcox Dairy donated the ice cream. Um, so there's a bunch of different things going on, um, but I know, uh, I'll answer any questions that the board has, but I also want to give time to Mary to share.
Mary also wanted to speak to it. Why don't we, just, Mary, if you could just, uh, raise those and we can have the discussion?
Sure, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Mary.
So as I said, I want to preface this by saying, I think it's wonderful, uh, that the town is so involved and so many people are so involved in the block party. I'm, I'm happy to know, Mike, that there were people from Pleasant Street in, in on planning this, because I certainly wasn't aware of this and I don't know anybody on the street that was. So, that was going to be one of my first suggestions for the next time. Um, we got, uh, the historical perspective is that we had a great neighborhood meeting, um, and Mike was there and Kaiam Morris was there. And there were, there was a, there was talk about people who were new to the neighborhood saying, like, I'm afraid to walk down the street. And there were other people, such as myself, saying, what are you kidding? There's, I mean, we all know that there have been drug busts on Pleasant Street, okay? Um, there have been drug busts in other parts of town, too. Um, so, but that doesn't, that doesn't mean it's a dangerous neighborhood. And in fact, I was telling stories about some of my neighbors and how helpful they've been to me and other folks, without even being asked. So we decided that a good thing would be for us to all get to know each other. And harkening back to the survey, where some people wrote it in, and the discussion that happened there, a lot of folks, and I'm, I'm old enough to remember block parties when I was little, it was like the most fun thing all summer, right? Close off the street, everybody's out there with their tables and cooking and sharing food and playing music or whatever they're doing, the kids are all running around playing. So this sounded like a really good thing. The other thing is that because, um, Pleasant Street is economically depressed, and because there are a lot of addiction issues in economically depressed areas, lots of folks in my neighborhood feel kind of excluded for various reasons, from Bennington as a whole. They also, a lot of times, would rather be invisible and not call attention to themselves. So the idea was that a block party would kind of make everybody come out and it wasn't like you have to go somewhere, it's like, it's coming to you. So when we got the notice on our door a few weeks ago, saying 12 to 2:00 PM Pleasant Street in front of Thatcher House, I went, huh? Because nobody lives in that block except for the people at the shelter who aren't actually going to permanently live there. And then it says, free food, family-friendly activities and music. That sounds good. Neighborhood meet and greet, that sounds good, but it's not really in the neighborhood. Um, it says the street will be closed to vehicle traffic, please bring chairs if you require seating. And I don't know if anybody knows how far it is from like the horseshoe end of Pleasant Street up to Thatcher House, but carrying chairs is probably not practical. It also says, plan to use your own private bathroom facilities, none will be available. So that didn't sound awfully welcoming either. Um, it also says, no substances, no alcohol, no tobacco, no pets, please. I get that, okay? I, okay, I'll, I'll admit it, right on television, I'm stupid and I smoke cigarettes, but I do not get the smoke near children. So if I were at a block party and I wanted to smoke a cigarette, I would walk away from where other people were. But that, but I would still be at the block party and able to come and go. So, I was, I was talking to Mike about these concerns, because I've been to a couple events over the weekend where I've encountered lots of folks from Pleasant Street who are like, well, I'm not going all the way up there, I can't even use the bathroom, and, and, you know, I don't know, what, what is this all about, anyway? And then the article in the paper said there was, and Matt was, or Mike was just, I'm so sorry, Mike was just talking about, um, the greenup thing, which is great, because the other thing we talked about was, why don't we use that time to make, let's put some flower boxes on Pleasant Street, okay? And let's all plant them. And let's make it look really nice. And let's become a community and a neighborhood, and that's what this was all about. So I was a little disappointed to hear that people weren't coming and to hear that some of the sentiment was, um, and again, this is not meant to be, you know, unappreciative for anything that's being done, but some of the sentiment was that it's folks who think the Pleasant Street folks need to know what they need to do to become a community, telling them how to do that in a place that isn't exactly their own backyard. And then it might become a self-fulfilling prophecy, because if, uh, all, a lot of other people are invited to. I don't know if anybody knows it, but a lot of churches send out the word, everybody come, you know? And of course, I mean, the more the merrier, but that doesn't make it a neighborhood block party. And so, the idea is that if the people from Pleasant Street itself don't show up in full force, then it's going to reinforce this awful stereotype that people have about Pleasant Street, where, see, they didn't even come to this nice block party that the town put on for them. So, Mike was, is also, I shared my concerns with him, and he understands that. And I understand the logistics of closing off the street further down and people not being able to come and go, that's a rough one. We are going to have a meeting tomorrow morning to try and figure out how to get the word out, because, for example, St. Peter's Church decided, since they are on the block, that our bathrooms are going to be open and we are going to put tables and chairs outside, and we're having all kinds of games for the kids and that sort of thing. But there's no way to get people to know this between now and then. So that's what we're going to meet about, to try and figure out how we can get out the word. And I just, I just wanted to present that perspective, so that if by chance, there aren't a lot of people from Pleasant Street there, people don't say, see, a block party, doesn't work. Because I think it could work, and I, I know that everyone here wants it to work, I want it to work, the people on Pleasant Street want it to work. It's just a matter of refining the process. So, thank you for listening.
Thanks, Mary. Thank you. So I'll answer questions or, um, concerns that the board has. I think in, in talking with Mary, and we'll certainly talk more tomorrow morning, um, you know, some of it is, what can we do between now and, and Saturday? Some of the logistical pieces, um, you know, if, if the one big thing that is preventing people from attending our bathrooms, um, you know, then we'll try to find a solution of that, but, uh, with working with the church, but also if we need to bring in porta-potties, that's a, a relatively easy fix, um, with the time that we have. Uh, I think the location piece, you know, we can be a little flexible, but again, having something up in a residential neighborhood where you're blocking traffic so people can't get out of their own driveways, that becomes a little more, uh, of an issue. Um, you know, I, I think also too, when you have, um, uh, organizations trying to sponsor the event as opposed to, um, individuals, there's other considerations you have to take into place. Like we, we did talk about having community and organizations provide food, but we also recognize that that's a risk, um, when you can't have control over where the food come from, how it's prepared, what ingredients are used, how it's been stored. Um, so we also tried to minimize some, some risk on that. And so, uh, in that, I think we're going to try to, um, work with Mary and see what we can resolve between now and Friday. But it sounds like, you know, the community members that are, are participating are excited about it. I think there was a mixed message early on when the paper covered it, um, where it came across like the entire community was invited. Uh, so, you know, I want to clarify that this really is a, a block party for, uh, the residents of the street. Um, and, and the letter did go out to organizations because we needed them to, one, be aware as a property owner on the street, but two, we wanted them to participate. So, um, you know, we'll try to curb some of that and, and have a conversation tomorrow about how best to do that. But I'll answer any questions that the board has.
Sure, we're going to keep the questions short, because I think the proof is going to be the postmortem.
Yep, absolutely.
And how effective it was, and so next year can, the second annual. Um, but, board members, if you do have a thought, question, but have in mind that this is something that's already planned, let's not redo the plan.
I, I should say too, that we did, um, so we did some benchmarking as well. So we did talk with, um, uh, Brattleboro, we talked with Rutland, they had both done block parties, so, um, we tried to pick up best practices from those other, uh, communities.
And first responders are going to be helping out, right?
Yeah, so they'll be, again, but they'll be in polos and shorts and serving food, so.
Where are you getting your volunteers from? Is it first responders?
So some of the volunteers are coming from those that have been involved early on, so the organizations. Um, we're certainly open to volunteers, I think in the letter that went out, um, it did ask, uh, you know, if you want to be an active participant, certainly let us know, we'll tell you the best way to, to go about doing that. Um, you know, whether it's, so if, there are some organizations that have said they're going to bring volunteers.
Well, I have no doubt the two of you will come up with some great ideas, but, um, hopefully the weather will cooperate, that would be great.
Yes.
Yep, and I was just thinking, to, to get over some people's uncomfortableness about coming out, it's really good to give them a job, something they have to do, even if it's something really simple.
Sure.
Sometimes that really helps people just
Yep.
...take that step and they have a responsibility to go.
Yep.
That's it.
So that's a good idea.
Mike, I applaud your efforts. I mean, I think this is a great thing.
Thanks, Sean.
And you know what? Everybody that's sitting around this table knows that, um, no matter how hard we try or don't try, we've made an effort. And there are going to be some ankle biters, I love that phrase, Mr. Keen. We're never going to be satisfied with the, uh, the, uh, level of effort that, that we make. So for those who would say that, you know, uh, playing Monday morning or Friday or Saturday morning, uh, Sunday morning quarterbacking on this, you're making an effort.
Appreciate that.
And I applaud it, absolutely.
Thank you. And, and I should say, the, the board, the entire board's welcome to, to come, um, you know, again, I-
I'll be there, are you kidding me?
Part of, part of what I think, so there's, there's two components going on here.
By the way, you had me at mini pony.
See? Uh, uh, we'll, we'll get a saddle up and ready to go. Um, but the, one of the components too, I think, and I think Mary can appreciate this too, is breaking down some of that stigma that, that Pleasant Street is its own little community that we don't want to interact with. So I'm hoping we can bridge that gap as well. Because, to be honest, one of the things that incre- that impressed me about Pleasant Street was that if you took those individuals and put them on any other street, it's exactly the type of neighborhood you want, because people will walk out of one house, walk across the street, sit on the porch of someone else's house, they'll sit there and chat, they know everybody by their first name. Um, and I saw that from the times, uh, you know, I've walked up and down the street and, and met with people. So, um, you know, from the, from the people that you want on the street, the, it's a really close-knit community, so hopefully we can engage them over the next couple of days. Um, the only other, Jeannie, did you have a-
Well, go ahead.
No, go ahead, just, I had a final-
No, I, I think it's really reinforcing what you just said and also what Mary said, and I really appreciate you saying this. I, I do, I, I think, um, the, the second year effort hopefully will involve the community from the get-go, I, so that people don't feel like something's being done to them as opposed to
Yep.
...it growing organically, and I, I think that's a, it, it's a, it's always a concern when people come in to a community. It doesn't feel like it's yours.
And, and that's great feedback. I think there's those, and Mary's one of them, those people that really call Pleasant Street their home and have lived there for a long time. But then you also have this significant transient population there too, um, that probably half won't be there by the time next year rolls around. So, um, that's a whole other challenge. The only other comment I was going to make was, um, one of the things we did launch with this, because this is part of Project Catalyst, which is a much larger effort, is that we did, um, launch a website, it's a pretty preliminary site, but it's meant to at least give the information, so I just wanted to give a preview of that. Um, you know, here it just gives the opportunity for people to learn about what's going on and some different, um, different pieces of information, who our community partners are. It links in social media, it has a calendar option, it has a blog option. Um, so there's a couple of different opportunities. So there's a couple of different opportunities here for us to, to interact with the community. And then it also gives people the opportunity to participate through contacting us.
So who's this, who's this designed for?
In all honesty, it's, right now, it's really meant for anybody from general public to business. So it's community wide and this is based off of some of the stuff that they've done in Rutland and some other communities, but it gives people an opportunity to at least become part of the Project Catalyst effort.
And that's on the town website?
It's, so this is its own separate website, but it's linked, it's linked to through the town website. Yep. That was during a Battle Day parade, by the way. So those are three, three logos.
Mike and, and Mary, if I understood you correctly, there are people from, let's say, the far east end of Pleasant Street who will need to go a block, a block and a half to get the, is there some way we could just sort of, get some sort of ride to get down and back?
Yeah, that's, that's a lot to think about. We can think about that because it is, I mean, it's not a long way. I like to walk, so it's not a long way for me. But if I have four kids with me and carrying diaper bags and
Or if you're bringing a chair, or, or if you're older.
Or whatever. It is long and it, it is long if they, they got a hold of that.
Exactly.
So we got to get that worked out there.
Yeah. So I think that's all good feedback.
Good.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There, that's it.
Are you looking at other areas to do within the Neighborhood Village Catalyst, once this goes?
Yes. So I think, great comment, the original concept, because resources are limited and, and that it has been a challenge as we move forward. But I think certainly identifying kind of these different areas where we'd love to put different resources in, but each area is different. So if we were to pick another street or another neighborhood, what they need is going to be different than what we're doing on Pleasant Street. So, you know, Pleasant Street needed a lot of infrastructure upgrades. Lighting, sidewalk curb, street paving. So there's a, it was a very different need. But yes.
Let's go right into the maintenance ordinance.
So one of the other components on the agenda was the property maintenance ordinance. What you have in front of you is pretty much the, the version that was at the last time presented. There was only one suggestion, but it wasn't decided on wholly by the board. But it was on page two under section four jurisdiction. And there was a comment made about considering owner occupied versus non-owner occupied. So I made the note of that. But if there are other comments, this is also an opportunity for the public to speak as well.
I think it's important that we emphasize that this is a first cut of, of a maintenance ordinance for our community, which we've never really had before. And we're talking about a very focused area, basically the central business area. We're not trying to make this across the entire community. And also within that area, we're trying to focus on basically unoccupied vacant properties.
Yeah. Well, and, and I should just point out, it, it is townwide, but it is, but it is very specific on commercial, not necessarily residential. Unless we're talking multi-unit dwellings or rentals. Yep. So.
Anybody have questions, comments, concerns, or want, because this is the, an opportunity to, to share those. This is the first reading. The next time we'll come back, but it looks like a good effort.
I'm just going to say what I said the last time we were talking about this. People in this room and outside this room have worked on this for a long time, reviewed it with realtors, reviewed it with property owners, reviewed it with town council. And I, I like this first reading. I, we can, I hope we can dispatch it fairly quickly next time.
The only comment I was going to make, Jim, was I just wanted you to know that your comment was noted, even though the revised date didn't change because we didn't formally change it yet, but on page two under subsection or section four under jurisdiction, I did, up at the top there, I did make that note between owner occupied versus non-owner occupied. So it just needs to be a decision that the board makes, but I did capture that note.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm just, I think we got it. We'll come back to you, Mary. I just want to make sure the board gets the comments. Go ahead.
I had to read this a couple of times and I still, still don't quite know if I have it right, but I, I think you just straightened me out.
Okay.
All buildings
Yep.
in Bennington, but it's vacant properties in the central business district.
It's all vacant properties across town.
But the jurisdiction is over all buildings?
All buildings.
In Bennington. The jurisdiction is only over bare?
Vacant buildings or commercial buildings. So the only difference is if you're living in your home, if it's a single family home or if it's an owner occupied duplex, then you're exempt from the maintenance requirements. But if it's a vacant building, if it's a commercial building, industrial building, then it is under the purview of this ordinance. And I think I
So this would, just to play it out, this would include, for example, barns, sheds, other things that, pertinent structures that would go along with?
So I'd ask for Dan, just in terms of definition, in terms of commercial buildings, things like barns and structures like that, but.
This, the barn is?
No, no. It's spelled out, public buildings means any public building. As, as the proposed ordinance says. It's defined by the State of Vermont Building Code, but excluding single family and two family rentals. That's building. But then the other part of this goes to the property. Means any property, parcel of real estate on which a public building or vacant prop, building is located, inclusive of all buildings and other improvements thereon, and any vacant parcel of real estate located in the central business district. So that, I don't think that's conflicting because a building is a building. A property is, whether it's vacant or otherwise.
And wouldn't public necessarily imply that it's used by people?
Excepting single family.
But a barn would not necessarily be used?
No, no. Yeah, that's, I don't know how, that's how I would see it.
Barns aren't actually vacant.
No, no.
Unless you have like, unless you have like a retail, those are retail and everything like that.
So I mean, to, to, to make it as clear as you possibly can, all vacant buildings are subject to the maintenance requirements, whether it's single family, two family, commercial, okay? In order to be subject to the, however, single family and two family, owner occupied and rental buildings are not subject to the, to the.
Wait a minute, rental buildings?
Single family and two family.
Okay. But other, other commercial rental properties?
Multi units are.
Okay.
Yep. So try to make it as, you know, there was some squeamishness on the part of property owners and some on this board that, you know, if you're going to go after single and two family, it should only be if it's vacant. And so that's what we did. But that's two or three word change. If you want to put them back in, that's easy. It's not, it's not difficult. But that's, that's where we drew the line, based on the feedback we got from the community and from you folks. Obviously, there's not a consensus at that time. There were just concerns mentioned. So that's where, that's where we left it.
Have you got any calls, comments from the public directed to you on the?
Not on the ordinance per se. I will say, sorry, Kevin's not here because he'll tell you. A good many of his calls that come in are people complaining about conditions of property nearby. Most of them are vacant buildings, so it's, no matter what, they're going to be covered by this ordinance. There are a very small percentage, maybe one or two that I can think of, where actually somebody's living in those one or two family buildings where they would not, this ordinance wouldn't reach that. But I can tell you that probably 95% or more of the buildings we have trouble with, when it comes to single family and two family, are vacant. So we, this ordinance will give us a tool we can use for probably 95% plus of those single family and two family structures.
Have you anticipated any problems with lenders, both either local or out of the area?
Anticipate any problems with who? I'm sorry, I missed.
With, because it's, you know, vac, you know, it's vacant, you know?
Well, as you know, that's a tough one because oftentimes these properties are in limbo or technically they're still owned by the debtor. But the debtor has abandoned the property because they know that they're going to be foreclosed upon at some point. Right now, our only way to force compliance, based on state statute, is to, to put liens on those properties. And obviously that's very complicated with the foreclosure process and what liens are extinguished by that process. So it's, it's a tough one. And we haven't, discussing with council multiple times, we haven't been able to find a way around that tricky issue. So.
Other time to hear from the public. Mary?
I have a quick question. The vacant, it's vacant buildings, but what about, there's at least one place rated the central business district? Where there, I know it has to be zone terminal.
But there's nothing there?
There's nothing there. Does that have to be vacant?
It does, it does include vacant land too.
Okay.
Yep.
Within the central business?
Yes.
Yep. Just within the.
Right, right in the, right downtown.
And identify for the audience, the central business district, the, where that is?
Sure. It, it's actually much smaller than people realize. It is predominantly Main Street and that maybe. Yeah. So it's, it's smaller than the designated downtown. It's smaller than the, the design review district, which I just learned when we were doing the other incentives program. It's a very small section of right in the downtown.
Runs from depot to, is it Silver or Valentine?
Dan? Valentine?
Okay. And again, this is our first effort and I'd rather see something that has teeth and can be enforced with relative ease, meaning not having to hire five new assistant zoning and building administrators. And then see how it goes from there. And if it looks like we're getting the bang for the buck, fine. Otherwise, we'll revisit this.
Great.
I, I need to work a little bit more on it in my head. I also would like to go back to the minutes of that meeting because I, I feel like I remember it differently than, than maybe it played out. And I apologize for not having time to call you about it this week. It's vague enough in my mind that I can't really draw it all back. But, but I, I thought, for example, on the public building thing, my memory is that that was more a conversation about if you have a resident in the building, not whether it's a single or two family rental, but if it were.
If it's owner occupied, do you mean?
Owner occupied, I thought was the phrase that we were kicking around.
It is. And, and I did, that was the one I made a note of, but the board didn't come to a decision on that. So it's just, I made a quick note in the version you got on page.
So are you in G? Are you in thirty?
I was actually on page two. I just noted it in one place, but it would have to be
It's on jurisdiction.
and then under jurisdiction up at the top there, Donald.
I see.
The last sentence. So there's that little piece. But I think moving forward, when we, when we have our final version that the board wants to approve, you know, we can either have single family and owner occupied or we could have single family, two family and owner occupied. So there are a couple of different options there on, on how broad you want to get. Usually, and I think where we went with the two family is that the definition of multi-unit dwelling is three or more. So that's why we identified single and two family. But then Jim brought up the, the point about owner occupied. So I think we should clarify that for sure. It's just a question.
And three, three or more is a public building, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So that's why we had multi-units were three or more. So if the board, is that what the board wants to put in and identify, specifically identify owner occupied?
Well, I, I don't think.
As, as buildings that would be exempt, I should say.
Okay.
So owner occupied, single family.
Well, even, even that, I, I don't think that, you know, in fairness, that. The point that I, that I made in our past several meetings about this was that, you know, if people are making honest effort, effort and, you know, they're financially strapped or whatever, you know, we shouldn't be coming after them with, you know, hammer and tongs. But if, then again, if people are just being belligerent and it, it's apparent that they have the means to maintain their prop, property in a, in a proper way, then, you know, and that's the conundrum that I see between, you know, falling down or adopting this.
So you're feeling that we would be better off not to, and, and I could be persuaded on this point too, not to have exemptions at all, but to leave it to the most, enforcement to the kind of most egregious cases?
I wouldn't argue with you on that. You know, if there are people that are really making an honest effort and for whatever financial reasons or financial constraints, they can't do it. It sounds arbitrary. And I suppose there is an element of arbitrary, that being arbitrary. But the slippery slope on it is, you know, who makes the decision?
If I could, I think that you're worried about a miniscule percentage.
Okay.
We're talking about the, the properties we have trouble with when it comes to single family, two family, regardless of they're owner occupied or rental, are the ones that are vacant. Almost no problems with owner occupied or leased, you know, tenant occupied, one and two family structures. So, you know, we have no personal opinion about which way you want to do it, but it's, I'm telling you, we don't have a significant problem with those types of properties. So they don't really need to be in here for those one or two properties that we may be able to think of over the past five years where there's actually been an issue with someone who's lived in their home, living in their home or, or a tenant who's living in a single or two family structure, where there's really been a problem with, with maintenance. Not to say it doesn't happen, but we can usually, usually there's other issues going on there.
Like health and safety code?
Well, junk on, junk outside, you know, problems with maintenance of the structure where it's becoming unsafe. You know, those sorts of things. We can usually, there's usually other things that are going on there where we're going to be dealing with that property. So those are, it's a miniscule portion of our problems. If you want to include them, fine, but I don't think it's anything to spend a lot of time worrying about.
Sure.
What about the vegetation?
Uh, in the most. Yep. So, yeah, so great question. So we, there were some major concerns about, you know, identifying a specific length of grass. But really what we talked about was vegetation overgrowth. So there is some discretion there, but I think the, the idea was those extreme cases, you know, where it's clearly unmaintained, where someone really hasn't spent any time trying to maintain either the front of their building or a vacant lot or something like that.
I think one of the original form templates that we got, there was a height issue and that became really not particularly helpful.
But I think we're looking for those people who are very
It's obvious.
Extreme cases where it's very clearly unmaintained.
So it's not going to be deemed as arbitrary, but it's obvious in the eyes of the whole?
Well, and I, I mean, I don't, you know, our, that's typically because of the size of our department. You know, the most extreme cases are the ones that we, we go after or if someone registers a complaint.
Hypothetically, if we pass this, how many, this is just a, you know, high, low properties in this area, would you suggest would be subject to some remediation?
All of them or the ones that would probably
Number wise?
We'd take an active.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there are, clearly in my mind, there are 10 that I could come up with.
Okay.
You know, where there's a very clear violation and, you know, in talking with Kevin about how he approaches that, it's, it's never simply visiting the structure and handing out a violation. So there's a, there's a remediate, you know, identification of the, of the issue and a remediation period. And then once, even when the violation's provided, there's a remediation period after that as well. So there are multiple times where someone has the ability to correct the, the issue.
Would there be an opportunity to kind of give a property owner a heads up that things aren't looking good? things aren't looking good, and?
Well, typically, and I don't want to speak for Kevin, but if a property is identified, the first thing he actually does is, you know, he'll drive by the property and simply send a note.
Okay, great.
So he sends a letter that just says, you know, this was what I witnessed or identified.
But this wouldn't be implemented?
Yeah, and, yeah. We very, very rarely begin formal enforcement process, and even more rarely actually go to court. So, most people, once they realize that we're serious, they take care of the problem. Sometimes it takes a little time and effort, but usually we don't have to go to court. He also, I know Kevin does make direct phone calls as well.
Let's revisit two weeks' hence to possibly respond to, but in the interim, I think if any members of the board who are public have questions or concerns, direct them to.
Yep, I'll receive all of those, and, and this is up on the web, so people do have access to this document.
Good, satisfied.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we going to the tax rate?
Property tax rates?
Yep.
Yes. At that time of year when we, we set the tax rates for the general fund, the highway fund, and the Bennington Fire Department, we are proposing tax rates of sixty-three point one-nine cents for the general fund, the highway fund at thirty-seven point seven-two cents, and the fire department or fire fund at seven point eight-four cents. It's important to note that the general fund is up approximately four cents. However, the highway fund is down a penny, and the fire department fund is down about four tenths of a penny. The total increase is two point four four cents, or two point two percent. We have projected back at budget time, if everything had held, that we would be looking at a two and a half cent increase, so we're slightly below that. And that brings a total for those within the former village limits. Now, this would not, this would change for those who live in the rural fire district, because their tax rate is slightly different. And of course, in North Bennington, in the Village of Old Bennington, they have their own general fund tax rate as well. We're looking at a total tax rate of one dollar and eight point seven-five cents per hundred. And given the recent decrease in the education tax rate this year, which is a first, the actual increase for a property with that tax rate will be about four tenths of a cent over last year, practically level funded, and I think that should be good news to all of us.
Yeah. When's the last time you had that kind of a report, a level funded homeless, a town and school?
We're probably going back somewhere twenty years.
Yeah.
Where we've seen that. Education tax rates have constantly outpaced the towns, but nonetheless, even, we've always been in the two to three cent range ultimately. Last year, we did have a big jump at five cents, because we were, at the time we set the rate, we, we knew we weren't going to get some revenues we had counted on, and you folks wanted to fund the highway fund at its, at its budgeted amount. So I would be looking for a motion to set the general fund, highway fund, and fire department tax rates as proposed.
I will entertain such a motion. So we got, okay, we got a second and a third. We do have a, actually a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, questions that you'd like to focus or direct to the board? I think this, all the effort certainly is, you should be congratulated in the management side of things to keep it at that level.
Well, I, I mean, obviously, you folks do the work on the budget, so you too should be congratulated.
Well, we're looking for that, too. But all in favor of the tax rate as offered, motion made, signified by I.
Aye.
There's six in favor, no opposition.
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Good work, Stuart.
The next is the borrowing, and this, these purchases were all approved during the budget process. We are, we are allowed to combine them in a borrowing through People's United Bank for a, an F-350 truck, for a gator that will be shared between the police and recreation departments, for maintenance of some of our new parklands, and for enforcement there as well, and a large mower that will be used by the recreation department. It is a total of sixty-four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, the borrowing. We would need a motion to waive the reading of the resolution, and I have for you, should that be approved, the note itself, which requires your signatures, even though there aren't enough lines, please squeeze in. And then the resolution itself requires your signatures, and then the NARANABRA charter certificate also requires your signature. So there'll be three documents.
I move that we waive the reading of the resolution.
Okay, all favor of waiving? Aye, that's, okay, then, now to the motion to accept the borrowing.
So move.
Second. Again, as Stu said, this was done at budget time. It's not anything new, maybe for the new members it would be, but this was discussed and presented by the various departments when we convened back in January. And the rate is very attractive, two point one-five, I think it is.
Yeah, two point one-five.
And that's where the People's Bank?
It's about sixteen thousand a year over a four-year period. Very, very attractive.
Yeah. All in favor of the, or any, excuse me, any more discussion? Having none, anybody, would we all vote for, signified by I?
Aye.
That's six in favor and no oppositions. Thank you. Stu, do you have a report?
I don't have a manager's report, and there are any action items, I should note, though, that I think last time we talked about the fact that we agreed to take the lead on getting a letter out to all of the potentially impacted property owners regarding the PFOA situation, where the water lines would possibly pass their properties. I'm, I'm happy to note that we mailed, I think it's four hundred and thirty-nine letters today with a return postage postcard, and I'm very hopeful that the people who receive these will actually respond, because this will give us a true idea of the interest in, of people. We have of that four hundred and thirty-nine, I think two hundred and seventy-eight wells that have been contaminated above the twenty parts per trillion. There are some that are lower. Some of these folks may already be on municipal water, but because of the way the, the system is configured, we had to notify everyone where these water lines will be extended or expanded.
Is the, where's the testing? We did get the report from the state, but where do you think the final, where they last well?
The indication is, is that folks along the Chapel Road south, towards North Branch Street, there have been some fines, some hits there of above twenty parts per trillion. Fortunately, we can also serve that area, should we need to. I don't have numbers on what the estimate increase in cost would be to do that. And those folks, I believe they're going to be receiving a letter, because we know that they're there, even though they, some of those folks may not yet have been notified. Testing continues. And so if you are in an area that's impacted, you haven't had your well tested, the contact information for the state of Vermont is still out there, they're still active, and they're still pursuing it.
Is the area of interest, the latest area of interest on their website also? So for people who want to know.
I don't know that the maps have changed, because they generally don't change the maps until all of the property owners have been notified and the test results received. So there may be some lag time there, but we know that it's, it's in the Chapel Road area as well. But the, the beauty of it is, is that the, the amount of PFOA being found is slowly decreasing.
Dropping off, good.
So we're hoping that we're finding the outer limits.
Great. That's good.
Thank you.
That's okay. Other business, I'll just go right from, oops, I guess I better go the other way. Donald?
No other business for me tonight.
Okay.
I have three, I can do two things. Number one, I, I want to thank Stu and the Vermont League of Cities and Towns for arranging and having the, the training session for the members of the select board, and also members of the Stanford Select Board and Shasbury Select Boards, who joined us the other day in this, in this very, and, and North Bennington, in this very room, with good, deep introductions on, in terms of the, the open meeting, the open meeting law, in terms of what happens when a select board operates in a quasi-judicial matter, and ethical questions that come up. It was a pretty full day for all of us, but it was, I think, to have everybody around the table hearing the same thing at the same time. The second thing I wanted to mention is that we, as we are very grateful for the group of investors that is targeting the Greenberg property, and, and, and are confident that that will go forward and go forward well, I think it, it may be useful to remember that that is sort of the, the, the trigger event in a, what should be a bigger view of this town going forward. And we, as citizens and as select board members, need to be thinking about, what's the entire picture, of which the Greenberg property renovation and renewal would be a component? What do we, what do we want this town to be, ten years hence? What is our vision? I think that's partially incumbent upon members of the select board and town management to figure that out and propose it to people. But we're, we could start on the right track, we just cannot forget that there is a bigger picture. One of my sports heroes is Wayne Gretzky, and I love what Wayne Gretzky says, because he says, "I don't, I don't skate to where the puck is, I skate to where the puck is going to be." And I think part of our challenge as a town is to figure out, for us, where is that puck going to be in ten years, and, and aim ourselves for that.
No, no, I, I think that's why we have these other business discussions, because going, staying with your thought, you know, the Greenberg block, block is critical, but it's really a start. And if we just sit back and say, "Well, go ahead, developers, we're all behind you, and we'll support you," that, we're not doing our job. I think we, as a select board and the leaders of the community, I think the community expects more of us, that, you know, it's more than just the downtown tax district, it's more than the, the, this part that we discussed tonight. We have to have a, a community vision, and I believe that we need a, an agenda to discuss that, and how we want to, if we want to, proceed with it. Because if we just think that Greenberg block is going to do it, well, we're not going to be either doing our job, and I think the community is going to be, is going to be a disservice to our community. Let's look, look forward. Couple of other things, too. I, I do think as part of this discussion, and maybe will fit into it, I think we need a, an agenda, where we talk about our charter, and what we, how we want to look at a charter that hasn't been really looked at for a number of years now. So we, as the leaders, start to look at how we see that charter fitting into the, their plan and that vision that we hope to, to establish. That, you know, there's a lot of heavy lifting when you look at those things. That's not something that the first review is going to result in a, in a, a change in our, our governance. That is, is part of, I think, that, that vision process that Michael was, is talking about. And the other area that is concerned to me, and it sort of touches on our maintenance ordinance, but, you know, as I look around, and I've talked with management about, management about this, some of these extended stay facilities that are operating in this community are really doing a disservice to the folks that happen to reside in those places. And it's a, it's a big nut, but frankly, some of these places are not fit to house individuals that stay there, not just on.
Better extended stay.
Where someone would stay, not on a, you know, passing through or a motel stay, where they actually live in motels. And we've got a number of them that are, I think are of questionable maintenance, questionable operation, and not a, a service to the folks that stay there. And it's not fair to the community or to the state to continue to throw money in these facilities when these families are put in living conditions that are not acceptable. It's a big issue, but frankly, I think we have to start to identify that it is an issue. And if we're trying to deal with poverty in other areas, we just can't, can't just look the other way. When you have a motel, seems by definition, where the school bus comes by every day during the school year and picks up the children who live there, there's something wrong with that.
Are they not subject to the same old code laws?
There are, we'll talk about it as agenda, because, as an agenda item, because as I understand, there's some limitations with that, based by statute and by ordinance. So this is a, a bigger issue, but I think the discussion needs to be pursued. Enough, enough tonight. But we've got a busy school year coming up.
I've got just one thing.
Go ahead.
You know, you were talking about local leaders, not just ourselves around this table, and I want to congratulate Polly Vanderland for, of Somerset and Tina, for her third flash mob in the downtown. And Polly posted something on Facebook, and I've actually seen it in other places, where the crosswalks have been painted to resemble the keyboard of a piano.
Over the edges.
Pardon me? I've seen it, yeah, and there are other places around the world that have done it. And I thought, wow, that's a great idea. And Polly took it one step further. And that is, especially at the four-corner, you know, in four different places on either side, and no matter which way you're heading, you could use those, where's Matt, Aaron, Matt, you listening? Paying attention? Come up here. You could potentially use that as billboard space to, one, promote businesses and/or upcoming events. And Tom and I were talking about this, Stu's not so enthusiastic about it, but.
I tend to be a realist, but.
Well, that's all right. Everybody, you ought to be a dreamer, come to my house. Anyway, I think there would be an opportunity for Greg Van Houten, our former select board chair, to create banners that, with a little of epoxy or glue, could be applied to the streets and, you know, over time, removed. And, you know, this may be an opportunity for not only the Chamber, but the BBC to generate a little extra income and promote our businesses. I think it would be terribly unique and could change over time.
Thanks. I just have two quick things. Several of us attended the select board slash school board meeting this past week, and I really liked the direction, and, I don't know, it just, we were diving a little bit deeper into the issues, and I think it was a really productive use of our time, and I think it's going to continue to be. I think the, the sense I got was that there's interest in, and maybe this has always been going on, and I wasn't aware of it, but it seemed like we were going to dive deeper into one topic per meeting, instead of sort of floating along on the top of topics, and that was really good. And this is something I thought of as I was listening to the presentation on Youth Appreciation Day. Has the select board ever had a student representative, like they do on the school board? I just thought that might be something that.
We talked about.
The select board could do for a high school student that's interested in getting into town government.
We did that a few years ago, and no takers.
Okay, there you go.
But it doesn't mean that we can't try it again.
I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
Have we ever had an intern within the management?
We, we've had a number of interns over the years in various departments, depending on the need and, and on the program. We ask that interns help design their program, and that it have outcomes that can be measured. Most of ours, our interns are college students, who are looking, looking to gain some knowledge of government and how it, how it functions. So we have done that a number of times in the past, and.
I was thinking more just along the lines of a high school student.
There's a kid out there, I did it with Bob Madison when I was a kid. So there's some other dork like me, or nerdy, you know, little political wonk out there who wants to, wants to do it.
Something to think about, something we could offer.
There's a kid out there who wants to do it.
Got a lot of, when school resumes, you've got a lot to do. So enjoy the summer, right?
Just an idea.
No, it is, it's, no, it's a great idea. These are all, this is where things start to take place. We do have a need for executive session and trying to comply with statutory requirement. We need to move into an executive session if the board should determine to discuss a contract matter, because the premature disclosure or discussion would basically put the parties at substantial disadvantage. So, did I actually get a motion relative to that? Move to find that the general public should not be participating in this next discussion.
I move that we go into executive session based upon the rationale that you provided.
Second.
So, is there any discussion? So move, we will go in, because we're going into executive session. We will then come out of this executive session to adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.
We need a few more signatures. There are three each on these notes.
There's three? Oh, I only got two.
This is really just to inform everybody.